Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Education, Marion City Schools, I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Veronica, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. McKinnis?
Here.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. McKay?
Here. All right, we go on to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President McKay. I'd like to start off with, again, our mission statement, inspiring a community of achievement and try to do it day in and day out, to that point, to the community, staff, and students. In the state of Ohio, there are approximately 600 school districts. The Ohio School Boards Association has reserved each January of the school year as Board Recognition Month. Community members and others usually only see a monthly meeting of the board that is held in public, such as this evening's meeting. What you don't see is the amount of work that each member of the board has to do in between meetings. There are calls, meetings, review of correspondence, review of policies, review of agendas, building visits, committee work, and so much more that takes time over their usually already busy day, including family time. And unless retired, this would also include time away from their full-time job. So let us thank them for promoting a community of achievement, their leadership, and their service to the Marion City Schools and the community of Marion. (applause)
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think all of us on the Board really love our district here, and we're excited to do the work. And we will continue to do the work for our district, so, thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
We'll turn now to Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President McKay. I will be starting off this evening with a follow-up to the policies that we brought forward. There were some policies that we discussed that we took back to our cabinet and also met with the Board Policy Committee. And so I did upload a few documents into the administrative content, but I will speak to those four that we discussed. The first one was Policy 2430, the district-sponsored clubs and activities. And I will say, on the revised drafts, the language is in blue. And there was the question of, you know, who would identify if there was a danger based on the attire? And so we went back and we looked at the OSHA language, and we basically took from that language to add in, "The administrator or the official of the event or the activity shall offer all reasonable accommodations." So it basically clarifies who would make the determination if there is a danger based on the attire. So we did add that to 2430. The second policy that we discussed at that meeting was Policy 2431, our interscholastic athletes. And this was basically the exact same language that was in Policy 2430. So we did take that language from OSHA, and we also added in who would identify the danger and who would offer the reasonable accommodation. So the amendment is to add in, "The administrator or official of the event or activity shall offer all reasonable accommodations." The third one that we discussed at that meeting was Policy 3120.08, employment of personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities. We have no changes to bring forward, but we did provide a resource, and we will add a link to this policy regarding the outline that ODE has on coaching permits. So we make it clear for everyone what is required of those people activity permits. And the last policy that we discussed changing was Policy 7440, under facility security. It had been brought up to give the superintendent a broader authority to all matters of safety and security. So we did go back to that policy. And in the second to the last paragraph, we added, "The superintendent is authorized to use any and all means necessary," including the installation of, and then it goes into metal detectors, "video surveillance." So we felt that by adding the clause that the superintendent's authorized to use any and all means necessary, that that would give the superintendent the authority to make those decisions in the event of facility security. So that is what we were bringing forward for the second read, or final read.
Just a couple comments on that facility security. I think at the bottom, it said that would assist in detection of guns, and then it says "and dangerous weapons." It's underlined. I think it should be guns, comma, dangerous weapons, or unauthorized objects. I just think it's a typo.
What number was that?
7440, the one she just went over. I think we're asking that the superintendent have all these, the ability to do stuff that would detect guns, comma, dangerous weapons, comma, or unauthorized objects, which would be, in this example, vape pens or other prohibited equipment and devices. I think that would suffice on that. And the other ones that I still, I think I questioned, not so much about, I guess, the coach or the official, but the term of, unless the apparel poses a legitimate danger to participants. If you're wearing a religious something, I don't know that it would necessarily, if I had a T-shirt on, pose a legitimate danger, but might conflict with the uniforms to potentially penalize the team or maybe the athlete. But if we're okay with the word danger to participants, I guess I'm okay with it. I just don't think that that would be necessarily a danger. I guess I could see how some jewelry might be a danger, depending on the sport. But as we've talked about before, most teams have to have the same, you know, uniform throughout. I don't know that it's necessarily a danger, because in our language, unless apparel poses a legitimate danger to participants, I don't know that wearing necessarily religious kind of emblems might be a quote-unquote danger. So I don't know where to go with that. Other than that, I think all the policies look good.
Mr. Ratliff, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I did make a phone call with, we wanted to hear the same thing. So we called the commissioner at Ohio High School, Doug Yu, and he stated kind of exactly what you're sort of talking about. He basically said, you know, "This has come up mainly in an individual sport like wrestling," because as you point towards, like in track, in a four-by-one, you have to have the same uniform on.
Correct.
So he said that they, to this date, they haven't had any real problems, because like you said, usually it's jewelry.
Correct.
He said, you know, "Steve, this has been more, if it's a loose-fitting clothes or something that could dangle, if somebody's, you know, on the mat, it could dangle in her mouth, could get over their eyes and they can't see." He said, "They've asked those things to be taped up."
Yeah.
So he said, "There's been some long sleeves or some other headgear that they've had to tape."
Yeah.
He said, "And to this date, they've had no issues with making sure that anybody who wants to participate has been able to participate."
Okay.
All right, moving on to my second item. I'm gonna pass along our process. This is officially our calendar hearing for the '23-'24 school year. And what I have passed out to you is our three draft calendars that we put together. And I just want to talk a little bit about the process for the school calendar, because it is negotiated in our MEA contract. And what we have done is, you know, it outlines that we are to, the administration is to provide a calendar with three different options. And we have the long winter, long spring break, long winter, short spring break, and short winter, short spring break. So those are the three calendars that you have there. We also, who make up this committee, are four DSC employees, four MEA employees, and then four OC employees. The calendar is to be shared with all of our MEA membership that are part of that bargaining unit, and they have the opportunity to vote on the one that they choose. And we actually had 222 responses, I believe. And Calendar A is the calendar that received the most votes. As you see there, that was the calendar with the long winter and long spring break. And that would have us starting school on August 14th for the first day of staff. And then our opening day for students would be Thursday, August 17th. And then our last day for students would be on May 24th, right before Memorial Day. And then the last day for our teachers to report would be on May 29th. We are going to continue to have ongoing discussions after the calendar is approved. We're gonna have them before, since we know which one has received the most votes. And we are working collaboratively with both MEA and OC to try to coordinate some dates a little bit better, as far as when we're doing PD, when we will do parent-teacher conferences, those types of things. But we will be able to build those in as long as we have that 184 workday. So Calendar A has received the most votes, and we will have to have 30 days passed before it's actually voted on. So I think it may not be February with Board meeting, but by March.
March.
Was there a discussion concerning, I think we talked about this last time, and it was something as a teacher I'd never considered, but with a long winter break and a long spring break, in terms of, and you've discussed this before, with the wraparound services for our kids who need it. I didn't know if that was, I know Mr. Ratliff brought it up, you know, some of these kids, for them to be out of our buildings for so long isn't necessarily a good thing for everybody. So if that could be part of the focus or the discussion, and we just make sure that we have to take that into account, if this is indeed the calendar that we go with.
Okay.
Did the 23rd of November, is that a, that conference exchange, is it on here, or no? We're not done yet, are we?
No, it's not on there. It's not on there yet, because we were gonna talk, we will talk with the committee about those things.
Okay.
Because we have more flexibility with those dates, so, I mean, it probably will be a conference exchange day, but that will be in our discussion for the committee.
All right. Treasurers' Report.
I need a motion to approve Board minutes from December 12th.
Shall move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Real quick, on this long winter, that Thanksgiving is the 23rd-24th, right?
Yeah, Thanksgiving is the 23rd.
Well, because it has '24, '25, but I'm looking at this, the '25 would be like the Saturday.
Yeah, it should be '23.
Yeah, '24 and '25.
So that's a typo. Okay. Yep, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, financial approvals, motion to approve the following financial items. December financials, including fund balances and checks written, and donations of $500 to Harding High School Robotics from, I'm not going to say that, our--
Our Sloot Metal.
Okay. Tubular products. 875 donation of gift cards, hats, gloves for our homeless students for Christmas from the Women's Club, $1,000 donation to Olivia Davis's class for their coffee shop project from United Federal Credit Union, and $542, $524.32 to the bench deposit for the class of 1957. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Now we come to item six, hearing of the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside[895.23][895.23](applause) for the Board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The Board offers public participation to members in the public in accordance with the procedures below. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. We allow each speaker three minutes. And I would remind you that this is a business meeting. So I have two people. The first one is Jim Bechtel. Would you come up and stand at the microphone, please? And I do time, three minutes, just so you know.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bechtel. I reside on Wildwood Court here in Marion, and I thank the Board for the opportunity to speak. I come with an important message tonight to all parents. I am partnering with the Protect Ohio Children Coalition. The website is protectohiochildren.net, and they are also on Facebook. This coalition is formed from six separate groups dedicated to shining daylight on the darkness of critical race theory, comprehensive sex education, and social-emotional learning. They have a site map of every Ohio school that has been targeted for this indoctrination, and Marion schools are on that list. The following is their mission statement. Children have a legal right to an academic education that protects their innocence, free from comprehensive sexuality education and radical indoctrination. They will not tolerate the radicalization of children in our schools, and will equip and support individuals who are monitoring and evaluating school boards. They will assist in replacing radical school board officials through the election process, end of statement. On their website, you will learn about your legal rights under Revised Code 3313-60. In short, you have right of access to all materials used in the instruction of your child. You also learn strategies and techniques stating your concerns to the Board, along with a tremendous amount of support at your disposal. We have a duty in this democratic process between Board and parents to make our concerns known. Many times, the Board is in the middle between an administration with an agenda and policies that, quite frankly, parents find unacceptable. We look to support and work with the Board, not fight them. I believe the Book of Ephesians says it best, that we don't wrestle against flesh and blood, but against powers, principalities, rulers of the darkness of this world, and spiritual wickedness in thy places. In these days, we all need to be praying for our school board members. So myself, I'll put on the whole armor of God and battle with truth and honesty of heart, having love and respect with all whom I disagree. It is my prayer that board members, teachers, and parents will work together to create the best education possible for our children. And in closing, let our focus be education and not indoctrination. So, parents, if you find yourself agreeing with their mission statement, I encourage you to go to protectohiochildren.net and check it out. I think you'd be glad you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rollins.
Hi, thank you. I apologize for the lack of voice. I just wanted to start, as MEA president, I also, I often get told that I only speak of negative, but as Director of choirs in this district, I work my butt off to only put as much positive into this district and our children and my community that I live in. I give it hours, and I truly care. And so I want to start by saying that things that I truly care about are the future of our kids and their success in becoming adults. I want to thank the Board for giving two candidates that you reviewed, who I think have a lot of merit. And I want to make sure that I am heard correctly. I will support your offer to Olympia 110 percent, because I believe in what she has represented to me so far in MEA. I believe she is supportive. I believe that it is important for all of us to stand behind that. I also think that truth is an important piece to keep in mind. It is okay to have differing opinions on how we get to a destination, as long as we are always working together. And sometimes I see us fearing the fact that you have a teacher very confident to stand in front of a crowd in front of their community and say, "I want better." Because, you know what? I do want better. I will never settle for us being an average school. My program is blessed to have extraordinary opportunities in this small town of Marion, because there are a lot of people that support us, a lot of people that care, and a lot of directors that give a lot of time, past the hours of pay, to do it. I also want to draw to the attention, as Director of choirs, that we have a situation with transportation. It was brought to my attention, we do not have a truck that is capable of pulling our music parents' trailer that is housing all of our set. I just ask that we figure out how to resolve this issue, because it's a student issue. And I know we are all here for students, and that this is not a Jamie Rollins issue, this is not a Board, this is, how do we get these kids to have the best show to wherever they need to be? And if it's something as far as transportation, you want me to be a part of a solution? I'll figure it out. I just cannot make money up here in one week. So if you can help me out in just planning ahead, we have lots of competitions ahead of us. These kids are doing great. We had a great showing. And I was blessed to have my students perform at Peace and Freedom Breakfast, very educational. And we just had 55 entries for solo ensemble, cross-band, orchestra, and choir. We host the OMEA District Two, lots of hours, because we all love our kids. I know you love our kids. I know the administration loves our kids, even if we don't always agree how we get there. But I am a person of passion. I will stand up here and I will advocate, but I want you to know you have 100% my support in moving forward, because that is who I am, and that's who I hope I always am, as an advocate for our staff and the students of Marion City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right. Next item. I need a motion to go into executive session. The motion?
Do you request an executive session?
Yeah.
Shall move.
Second.
All right. At this time, we are going to go into executive session.
We need to take a vote.
Yes. For item one, please call the roll.
Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
What's item one?
Item one is the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee.
Okay.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes. All right, motion carried. We're gonna be gone for just a few minutes, so stay tuned. We will be back. All right, I'm declaring us out of the executive session. We come to item eight, agenda confirmation. For motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Shall move.
I wanted to offer just a couple additions, and actually, one has decreased since I took a look at a staff update, or it was a DSC update. And it's a new year, and as you know, we have been, some of us reassigned to different committees. And I'd like to stick, or kickstart just a few new initiatives, but I'd like to start at the top with the Board first, rather than trying to start them in committee and bring them up to the Board afterward. That way, we can hopefully have the full weight and support of the Board behind these initiatives, and that way, we can hold ourselves accountable to, hey, Scott, the group you talked about putting together, is there any progress? And that way, we, again, as a Board, can, again, keep some accountability to. And I'll be brief. My goal tonight is not to hash out an entire plan, but to just introduce these things. The first thing I was gonna do, and Julie Kinney's already on top of this, and that was the one that I noticed was done, for adding to the agenda, I'm just gonna, yeah, for a second. I wanted to move that we create a college recruitment team, but we're already on that. So thank you very much. That's a discussion I've had with so many people for too many years without us really making a focus on that. I did have just a comment or two that I want to make. I want to make sure, and again, Julie's on this already, and Steve made their comments from OSUM with their placement of their education students, that they love coming to Marion City Schools. One of my former employees at the car wash, she was actually placed here last year as well. I do want to make sure that we make a concerted effort to recruit the best and brightest college graduates, so this is obviously very time-sensitive, too. And at the same time, we can guarantee that high-quality candidates of color are given every opportunity to be a part of Marion City Schools' teaching staff. So I don't know who's going to make up the group. As you said, you've already reserved spots at job fairs, and I guess we can talk later. If a university or college does not have a job fair, are we able to, this is my question, again, we can address later, are we able to then somehow meet their upcoming education graduates, too? So that, again, we can go find people instead of hoping they find us. So again, thank you. I was very encouraged to find that that was already taken care of, so I don't need to add that. One thing that I would like to see added, and again, we don't have to go through the whole plan tonight. I move that we create a, and I don't care really what the name is, Steubenville Inquiry Delegation. I had this talk with Steve back in November, after I had spoken to the principal of Steubenville High School for about 45 minutes, and it was actually a Marion City Schools staff member who pointed me in the direction of Steubenville about a year and a half ago. Their principal said that they have visitors from other districts all the time, including just the day before he and I spoke. Steubenville City Schools, they are considered by the Ohio Department of Education to be a comparable district to us, so when Greg Menzies presents the data of the comparable districts, they are one of our cohort groups, so they're in the same group as we are. They receive five stars across the board on their state report card, so for achievement, progress, what would it be, graduation, early literacy, and gap closing, they have five stars across the board. So, and obviously, we were lacking in some of ours. For us currently, achievement is two, progress is two, gap closing, three, graduation, three, and early literacy, one. Cleveland.com ranked all of Ohio's districts based on those, the number of stars, and they assigned a point value. They admitted, hey, this isn't Ohio Department of Education, but this is us. Steubenville shared the number-one ranking in the state with 12 other districts. Marion City Schools ranked 555 out of 613. What was interesting, Mansfield City ranked, they had the same exact ranking, 555, they are also in our cohort group. So we have us with our current stars, and again, that unofficial ranking, Mansfield, another cohort, very similar, but then you have one group from our school, our comparable list, who's five stars across the board, and they're ranked number one, again, sharing that ranking with 12 other districts. So what I would hope is that we, as a Board, would make a formal group, a delegation, if you will, and again, we don't have to hash this all tonight, but perhaps two board members, curriculum and student service personnel, superintendent, assistant superintendent, maybe someone from the Treasurers Department, teachers, I don't know. And again, that doesn't have to happen tonight, but I would move that we formally set up a Steubenville delegation to go talk to them and find out, hey, what are you doing right? And can we do, because they are a comparable district to us, they're in our cohort group. So I would move that we add that to the agenda to kickstart that movement.
I'm confused. So that which--
Yeah.
That which you're talking about, you want to add it to the agenda?
For us, yeah. So if we add to the agenda, we, as a Board, will establish a Steubenville delegation. And again, I don't want to, again, get all the details tonight, but this would kickstart it with the Board, and then we can follow up and make a group and--
So you want to add two items, too?
Can--
Go ahead. I have one other after this.
The recruitment thing, and--
Well, the recruitment doesn't, because Julie's already on that. She said we've already reserved spots at the job fairs. So I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that that's already happening. I think we all agree that that's an important thing that we need to do, recruit teachers during the shortage, too. But I just moved that we-- What was interesting, Mansfield City ranked, they had the same exact ranking, 555. They are also in our cohort group. So we have us with our current stars and, again, that unofficial ranking, Mansfield, another cohort, very similar. But then you have one group from our school, our comparable list, who's five stars across the board and they're ranked number one, again, sharing that ranking with 12 other districts. So what I would hope is that we as a board would make a formal group, a delegation if you will. And again, we don't have to hash this all tonight, but perhaps two board members, curriculum and student service personnel, superintendent, assistant superintendent, maybe someone from the Treasurers Department, teachers, I don't know. And again, that doesn't have to happen tonight. But I would, I would move that we formally set up a Steubenville delegation to go talk to them and find out, hey, what are you doing right? And can we do, because they are a comparable district to us, they're in our cohort group. So I would move that we add that to the agenda to kickstart that movement.
I'm confused. So that which?
Yeah.
That which you're talking about, you want to add it to the agenda?
For us, yeah. So if we add to the agenda, we, as a board, will establish a Steubenville delegation. And again, I don't want to, again, get all the details tonight, but this would kickstart it with the board and then we can follow up and make a group and...
So you want to add two items to?
Can?
Go ahead. I have one other after this.
The recruitment thing and?
Well, the recruitment doesn't because Julie's already on that. She said we've already reserved spots at the job fairs. So I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that that's already happening. I think we all agree that that's an important thing that we need to do, recruit, recruit teachers during the shortage too. But I just moved that we add a vote for a Steubenville, again, whatever you want to call it.
Is this a committee or?
That's what I don't, that's the thing. So to me, it's a delegation of people that we would send, and we'd have to check with, hey, how many, hey, we're going to show up with 20 people. Let's find out how many.
Can we table it for one month while we figure out the details? Could we do something like that? Not, not like I'm opposed, I just need more information.
That's fine, but I just want to, go ahead.
But are we, don't we go to, do we visit, like, I think Pam White was telling me today that she made a visit for a specific like topic or whatever. What's on our agenda now as far as addressing, like Mr. Wiedling was saying, the gaps or whatever? Do we add those?
Yes, a certain staff and buildings, as we see the need, we send them to other places to visit. And as Mr. Wiedling pointed out, we did have a talk about that in the fall. I would say kind of the other discussion was we're starting to, you know, lop off some things too and not take too much at one time. So the visitation in the committee, I think what the timing of it would be, like, let's get a little time, because is it a superintendent committee, is it a board committee? Is it just, because we have these committees also in the back here and it could be tied into there. So to maybe for us to have an internal discussion, because the other thing that could come into play, like sometimes does, is you go to a place like we had one of our buildings go to a place and get some pretty good takeaways and then that principal's coming here, is is this thing a long term? Or is it something that we can get educated on along the way? And there's an initial meeting with a district like this that could have some good takeaways? And then from there, is it a check-in with this internal, these internal folks that could take that on and then report out some, some takeaways or some learning opportunities or some growth opportunities? Because again, the committee thing could be a little sticky in that.
And this is what I would like to happen, is just what's happening right now, just to make sure that we pursue this. They've got to have a lot to offer. I don't think it's a surprise, I mean, it's, it speaks for itself.
No, I support what you're suggesting, that we look at other districts, particularly at Steubenville and their successes. It's not the first time we've done that. When we were creating our pathways, we went to Akron, we flew to Philadelphia to see their program because they had such a national pathway program. So it's not unusual for them, for us to put these delegations together. I share Mr. Rossi's concern about forming a board committee because then it becomes subject to other kinds of sunshine and notice.
Yeah, whatever we think. That's why I said two board, and that's why, so those, those details need worked out. And we don't have to do that tonight, but I would definitely like for us to take advantage.
I don't think it needs to be an agenda item to approve it.
As long as we stay on it, that's, okay. Gotcha. And that's, we can move forward with it. Again, we already had the conversation, we can move forward with that. So, okay, make sure that we follow up with that. And I guess the last thing, and this would be, again, I just got, move to the policy committee as well, which I did request. I move that we approve a hearing of the public time extension, a brief one, but still an extension. For our next meeting in February, I propose that we increase the amount of time that a member of the public is allotted to talk from three minutes to five minutes. I believe this would take the pressure off you, Madam President, who is often forced to decide whether or not to extend a person's time, because sometimes people don't hit their stride until the three minutes has, we've reached that. They've introduced themselves, they've thanked you or thanked us for allowing them the opportunity to speak, they get into it, and then the three minutes is already up. I honestly don't think most people will take the full five minutes, but I think if we move from three to five, another, you know, 120 seconds wouldn't be a bad thing.
So if you do that though, then you, you actually eliminate certain numbers. So, you know, the whole time is only 30 minutes. So if you extend that to five, then you're going to have less people be able to talk.
And I think that's something that we should, if we make the public aware of that, that's, yeah.
Again, are you making, you would like us to vote on that extension?
That's where...
That would be a policy change. Has it been to the committee?
All I wanted to do was kickstart this stuff tonight and that's it. So, okay, so if we want to, policy committee considers that, brings it to us as a board, I have no objection to considering as a policy change.
That's not necessarily true because we don't have a policy committee. We have a superintendent committee. You know, our rules address a policy committee as if we had a board committee to come through. So to address policy changes, they don't have to go through any committee because they're not our committees. It's the superintendent's committees and their advisory, not policy making.
Then I'd like an advisor, an advisement from the superintendent's policy committee.
Yeah, I mean, that, that might be true and it might not be ripe to hear, I just, you know.
Okay. I think we're all on the same page.
Okay. All right.
And being a member of the policy committee, we'll take a look at it.
And I think we did not too long ago change the term of the policy on that very subject.
Gotcha. Okay. So I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda already.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Under old business, I do not believe we have any. So now we're going to go to item not at 10. New business. Item A, grant pavement project. Ever since, okay. Grant pavement project. $371,000 and 371, $390,000. This is paid through capital funds. The superintendent recommends Iberia Earthworm Construction as the contractor who is in the best interest of the district for the asphalt repair project and requests authority to execute the agreement with Iberia. Rationale, the superintendent, working with other administrations, administrators, prepared documents to solicit proposals for the project. And then we go on through items one through seven, and then Marion City Schools, Board of Education, resolves as follows. Based on the recommendation of superintendent, the board selects Iberia as the contractor who is in the best interest of the district for the project. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the repair of the asphalt at Grant Middle School.
Second.
Perhaps the treasurer or the superintendent could tell us the process you went through to select this particular contractor.
I think Jacob is going to talk about that one. Come on up.
He's going to talk about all of them.
He could do.
Why don't you talk about all of the different contracts on here?
So the asphalt project, we put that up for public bids. I sent the specs to four different companies. We got three bids back, all of somewhat local. Iberia was the lowest. I did check two references and everything checked out. Their work looked sufficient. The other, couple other things on the agenda is for Garland Roofing is Garfield. I want to look at the exterior work on that building, masonry work, and roof coating. We did the same thing at Taft and at McKinley, and it corrected all the water issues we're having in those two buildings. Also on there is a couple roof projects at Harrison that'll finish that building up. It's been kind of pieced throughout the years, so that'll finish that building up. And then the last piece is?
Harding.
Yeah, Harding. So the front main entry up high, the masonry's falling apart. That's going to get rebuilt. And also the exterior of the media center is going to get tuck pointed and sealed because it, when it rains in a driving direction, it actually leaks into the media center a little bit. So that'll get taken care of at that time.
Any questions?
Yeah. If I'm to understand, then the, the pavement project did have, it was publicly bid?
Correct.
Because, I mean, just the way this reads, it doesn't sound like it was. It just sounds like the superintendent and the treasurer. So you sent that out and it was publicly bid? The public should know that we had...
It was on our website, posted correct.
Did you have anything in the phone system? Do you know that one?
That is not me.
Okay.
The phone, the phone system was bid through state bid process, so it...
And I, why I ask is because when I look at both of these, it didn't look like they were publicly bid. I mean, there's nothing in here saying we bid it by, let's say, the state processes and then it came back.
Right. The capital, or the pavement was bid through competitive bids on our own, so we did the specs and we sent them out.
No, yeah, I have no problem.
Oh, you're just saying it doesn't say it.
Either one, it doesn't say that in the...
Gotcha.
I just want it, for $371,390, the way this reads is because one code section, it doesn't come into school buildings.
Right.
It's, it basically reads like the superintendent treasurer just picked this company, which is now not the case, is what, what we're saying, is we did, even though we might not have had to, we competitively bid it anyway. And then the phone system, same thing.
Exactly. That's exactly correct.
But that one doesn't really read that way either, but I think it's important for the public to know that we're spending, you know, 700 and some thousand. They were publicly bid before we spent the money getting the best bid or quality of service or whatever. All right. Thank you.
And isn't it the process we normally do? We do send those out for bids and it's understood that that happens?
Yes, so our policy, anything over $50,000 we have to. There's just different processes that you use to do it. So like the grant, Jake engaged an engineer to write specs up for us specifically. So we sent them out and any contractor could bid on them. The roofs, the tuck point, you use an agency, another group that does that.
Garland Roofing, they do all the, all the bid specs, they bring in contractors and I'm there, they do visual inspection and then they, whoever wants to bid it. So usually I try to tell them I want to get like four, four estimates at that time. So not always bid on it, but we usually get two to three.
Question then in the future, and you said $50,000 is the limit where we have to do this. Is there any way, and are we allowed to, where the board could get a heads up, hey, we've got a big ticket item coming, we are going to open this up to bidding and here some of the public or the local companies we're looking at? Is that legal for us to be given a heads up on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'd like to see, just so we know that ahead of time, you know?
Jake does a really good job of making sure if there's anybody local that they get the bids, any bids up with you. He does a good job.
Well, I think the Buildings and Grounds Committee addresses these and should make a report to the full board with minutes of that meeting to the full board.
Yeah. He goes over all the projects and building and grounds of what's coming up and what he's going to bid. Sometimes, as much as you want to, have a local company if in some situations you can't. You know, if they don't have the lowest bid, depending on the type of project, but...
And I assume it could be, how long did this project take, or just to get the...
We've been working on the specs for about a year.
Yeah, so, and I understand we might not hear back immediately, but just to know that, hey, we're looking local. So thank you for that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item B, phone system. This amount is $429,454.76. It's budgeted and we are using Escher and Art funds. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
And this is upgrading our phone system as well as the PA system?
The PA systems are upgraded. Some of the PA systems, from my understanding, don't work in our phone system. So now the PA systems will work inside our phone systems.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item C, Garland DBS Inc. for Garfield Elementary. The amount is $145,787. Capital funds budget source. Superintendent recommends granting authority for the superintendent and treasurer to enter into an agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland for roof restorations at Garfield Elementary. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item D, Garland DBS Inc. for Harding High School in the amount of $62,074. Coming out of capital funds. Superintendent recommends granting authority for the superintendent and treasurer to enter into an agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland for roof restorations at Harding High School based on the attached proposal. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Items E, Garland DBS Inc., Garfield Elementary, $211,586. Excuse me, $211,586. This is capital funds. The superintendent recommends granting authority for the superintendent and treasurer to enter into agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland for exterior masonry, EIFs, and caulking restoration at Garfield based on the attached. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item F, DBS Garland for Harrison, the amount of $59,426. This is coming out of capital funds. The superintendent recommends granting authority for the superintendent and treasurer to enter into an agreement between Marion City Schools and Garland for roof restoration at Harrison Elementary. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item 11, new business agreement and contracts. Item A, OMU, Marion City Schools and Elgin Local. There's no fiscal impact. Superintendent recommends the approval of an OMU between Marion City Schools and Elgin Local Schools. Marion City Schools will provide properly licensed educators to implement the Title I program, serving eligible students of Elgin Local Schools that attend St. Mary's. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
We've been doing this for quite some time.
It's been, it's been decades.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Ms. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right.
Thank you, Veronica, for explaining that particular item to me because I did not understand, so thank you.
No problem.
All right. Item B, superintendent contract. It is recommended to improve Olympia Delaflora as superintendent of Marion City Schools effective August first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six contingent upon acceptance of mutually agreed upon contract terms.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam President, I've been a board member for over a year now. And make no mistake, our district is in a crisis. Ninety-one percent of our kids do not read as well as other Ohio districts. We have attendance issues, behavioral issues, and issues with teacher and staff shortages, to name a few. Now, I tried to better our district team by bringing in a eight-year superintendent, a Marion Harding graduate, athletic hall of fame member, and a candidate that has as much passion for this district as I do, all while maintaining the majority candidate, their candidate for the assistant superintendent's position that she applied for and received June of twenty twenty-two. Tonight, the majority of the board who fought for the previous ineffective administration will approve our next superintendent, and I won't be joining them. I've seen this vote coming since the hire date in June of twenty twenty-two, and I don't understand what took so long. We've wasted money on an interim superintendent and a consulting firm to simply promote our own employee. It also cost us precious time that this district needs to right its wrongs. I'm not with the majority on this vote as I chose eight years of superintendent experience over none. I chose a history of action over collaboration and more theory. I chose a history of fiscal responsibility over constant spending, and I chose a Harding graduate who is Marion maid over yet another outsider to lead this district. Finally, we will be approving her contract without my vote. This was not the salary that I approved. It was not the amount of education hours that I was willing to spend on, and I don't like the fact that she's seeking to teach basically college courses where we need a superintendent that is devoting one hundred percent of their time and possibly one hundred and twenty percent of their time to this district. I feel this extra employment when the package is over or approximately two hundred and some thousand dollars is not acceptable, and I cannot vote for this. I believe this is about a political agenda, taking precedence over our children's education, and I for one will not partake. Thank you.
I too just wanted to shed light on where just one of where one of the community board members is at this current moment. This is undoubtedly important time for Marion City Schools, and I just want my vote to be clear. Here's the good, first of all, and again, we're starting a new year. Two thousand twenty-two graduates received hundreds of thousands of dollars in the form of academic scholarships, which happens year in and year out. I'm not sure how many people are aware of that. Our athletic teams performed at levels not seen for almost fifteen years, and our performing arts continue to rack up award after award after award, and we've continued to do that this school year as well. I'd be remiss not to mention the the staff's role in all these accomplishments. The students don't do it themselves, but you talk about a heck of a partnership. We've got one. Unfortunately, there is some bad that we do need to recognize. A report card, as I've mentioned before, tonight, two stars out of five for achievement, two out of five for progress, three out of five for gap closing, three out of five for graduation rate, and one out of five for early literacy. The unofficial ranking of five fifty-five out of six thirteen, which is in the bottom ten percent of school districts. We still have discipline issues, some quite serious at all levels. Unacceptable attrition rates of staff and families, just like I said back in December of twenty twenty-one before I was on the board. I clearly stated it won't matter what programs we implement if we don't get control of our buildings because people will continue to leave. Before I continue, I do want to thank Steve. Showed up at a tough time. And although we don't know the immediate future, we'll soon find out. But all the conversations we've had, you're, you know, as they say, a straight shooter. You were always open and honest with me. You listened to me. When I said things, you wrote them down. You checked into them. So I thank you very much for the time that you've spent here. And good luck moving forward. Again, not that you're leaving right now, but I just wanted to be able to say that officially publicly as well. Are we a divided board? Yes, polarized. You could say that as well. But we've also had far more five to nothing votes than we've had three to two or four to one. Go ahead and look that up if you don't believe it. And I also want to point out that some of our divided discussions have resulted in the following. These meetings are once again being recorded for the public. A meeting with one elementary building staff led to peace rooms and CPI training for the staff. We have a renewed focus on discipline. We have a safe platform for the staff to speak their mind publicly so their voices can be heard. We have transparency in the form of public discussions that shed light on our decision-making as board members. We have an adherence to board policy, especially when it comes to administrative evaluations being completed fairly and on time. We have a vetting of contracts to get spending under control, and we have youth sports directors, I believe, in all sports now. So are we divided? Yes, but in many instances, this division has led to progress in this board. In one way or another, for the past twenty-two years, I've played a role in Marion City Schools as a teacher, a coach, a parent, or a board member. I still have friends and family who work for the district. Two of our children have graduated from Marion City Schools, and two more are still in school. I'd say I have a pretty good idea of what this district needs. And even though I am about to publicly voice a no vote, and I learned this from Mr. Ratliff, listening to him past year and a half or so, when Olympia is approved as our next superintendent, I will support her one hundred percent. I have already reached out to her to set up face-to-face conversations. I know she's got a busy week or two coming up so the two of us can start to work together. During the interview process, she mentioned numerous initiatives that I truly believe will benefit Marion City Schools, and I genuinely intend to assist her in her pursuits. I wouldn't be doing my job as a public representative in our republic if I weren't being willing to do so. That being said, and I am going to close with this, when I was running for office, I said that I'd be very visible. That approach was initially met with resistance accompanied by claims that I was out to get people instead of simply being there to help. So I did back off. Well, you know what? Where I work, including this morning, my boss shows up all the time, sometimes announced, most of the time unannounced. I don't really care, though, because I run my site the way I'm expected to. So just a heads up, you'll be seeing a lot more of me, but please know that I am there with the intent of improving our district. If there's anything we as a board can do, please let us know. Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Weidling's comments. I beat him a little bit. I've been associated with the district for sixty-six years when I began my first day in elementary school, that long ago, and have served this district not only as a student, as a parent, and as a board member now for the last thirty-five years. And I want to tell you that I have, over that period of time, been participated in search committees for superintendents a number of times. And our candidate tonight, and I will be voting very happily for her because she, her experience is impeccable, her knowledge of both literacy and other areas and in discipline like what she has brought, bringing to the table. And I've watched her for the last six months, and what she has been able to accomplish with Steve has been truly very much appreciated. And I know some will see that our vote tonight is further evidence of a divided board. But you know, we went through a long process together, lots of interviews, lots of reference checks, the meet and greet night when we read over sixty comments from individuals who helped us with their input. And throughout that process, we respected one another. We were respectful to the candidates and to each other. And so I want the the public to know that while some may view this as a division, it really is a vote of difference of opinion of perhaps where our vision might lie, and we each all have our own vision of where the district needs to go. But I can tell you, this board, all five of us, are united in many ways. We love our students. We want to do, to give them, provide them with the very best education that we can. We care for our staff. We want them to have a safe and nurturing environment. We care as a group very much about our parents, this community, and inspiring achievement in this community. So while this might be viewed, and I'll concede the headlines tomorrow, another three-two vote, that's not what it means. It really means perhaps a division of thought and 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 selection of individuals, but we are united in many more ways, as Mr. Weidling said, than we are divided. And so I just wanted to make sure that's clear, that we were getting, we're tonight getting an excellent, excellent new superintendent. It's historic, the first female superintendent. There's some debate about that, that in the early eighteen hundreds.
Late eighteen.
Late eighteen hundreds, before we were the Marion City Schools, we were the Marion Schools. There might have been, and Scott has researched this, that there was a female superintendent.
Somebody sent it to me.
But I think I can be clear in that this is the first superintendent of color that Marion City Schools have had, and I'm very proud of her achievements and welcome her with open arms to the Marion City Schools. Thank you.
So maybe we shouldn't go into executive session if we're, come out and do something different. But anyways, I'm going to, and I wholeheartedly support Olympia. I disagree with you that you said it's a political agenda. I don't think we could have done this process without our consultants. I understand that there is a process by which we we do this. I think Olympia, her resume is stellar. Her work ethic is amazing. Her commitment to our community is evident. She pushed a peanut, you know. And and you didn't mention the other day that you also are in involved in the leadership class where you are getting to know the ins and outs of our Marion community. So I, in my heart, feel that you will do what's best for kids, that you will enhance this district, and I wholeheartedly support you as the next leader of the Marion City Schools. I'm here for you, and you know, just let me know.
And I think you know how I feel about you coming to our district. And when I reflect on like the last six months, you got married, you moved, and you took a new job. I mean, most people would be crushed under one of those things, and you're still strong. And our teachers seem to really appreciate what you're bringing to the table for them. And I am so excited that you're here. It is historic in so many ways. I wore, when I moved back to Marion thirty years ago, I came on the board because I wanted to make a difference. I wanted to make, I wanted to see what we could do together. And I believe you're that person that can see us for who we are and make us better. We know we're not going to go back to the nineteen seventies, and that's probably a good thing because my schooling here in the seventies was not always great, and especially for women, girls. And we didn't have many athletics, and we didn't have a great music program, although some would argue. But I see us moving forward now in new ways to make us better but different, and I'm so glad you're here. All right. Call the roll, please.
All righty. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Congratulations. Could your husband please stand at least wave to us? This is Percy. Thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to say to us?
Um, yes. I want to say thank you so very much to the members of this Board of Education for providing me this opportunity to serve as the next superintendent of Marion City Schools. I'm excited. I'm honored to serve in this role, and I value and understand the importance of a strong partnership between the board and the superintendent. I look forward to building that with you over the next few years. I know we all have concerns, and concerns are okay, but we cannot let the concerns of the past get in the way of the work that we must do now to close the learning and opportunity gaps that currently exist in Marion. And I have concerns too, and things that I plan to work to address moving forward, such as those of our chronic absenteeism, our student discipline concerns, working with our community partners so that we can have sustainable programs to reduce non-academic barriers for our students to attend school. Recruiting and retaining high-quality staff is another thing that I believe is very important. And last but certainly not least, supporting our teachers to help all of our children reach or surpass academic growth and achievement goals. I am fully aware of all of the concerns that exist in Marion City Schools that I am walking into. I'm not looking for any areas to place blame. I welcome constructive dialogue and debate, and I am committed, committed to positively seeking solutions as we move forward. We need this board, along with this community, to come together to solve these problems collectively and collaboratively. And in order to do this job effectively, respect must be paramount in everything that we do, in how we communicate with each other, in how we engage one another. It is my hope that we will all find a way to put our personal agendas aside, focus on the work, and inspire a community of achievement on behalf of the students in Marion City Schools who are counting on us. We are precies. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Consent account, consent calendar approval. The consent calendar approval is all matters listed under this agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and removed from the consent agenda. The superintendent recommends approval of all consent agendas, items. Employment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all necessary documentation. So we are, we need a motion for items B through. What is it?
Jay.
Jay?
Kelly, before we do that, and I probably should have brought this up before, I'm going to say yes to this. Because the resignations and the retirements are part of this, and I know we've discussed so many times the exit interviews, and I know that they are being conducted. I was hoping if we need to do this later, whether it's February, whatever, in an executive session, if we could, because I know not every, we request the exit interviews, but they're not always conducted if somebody turns us down. I was hoping as a board, if we could get the number of exit interviews we've requested this school year, the number that were conducted so that people agreed. And even if the board could anonymously read those in terms or be given access to the the exit interviews so we can find out why do people continue to to resign. We've got twenty-one resignations. This is since September nineteenth meeting. We have twenty-one resignations, five teachers, four teachers aides, five cooks, one music accompanist, I think it was, one L P N, two bus aides, a bus driver, a long-term sub, and a custodian. We have seven retirements, and hey, if you're retiring, you're retiring. But we have two teachers that did it mid-year. So again, it's important. We've talked about it. But I think if we could get the board to to get specific information during the February meeting, that has to take place in executive session, I understand. Would like to see that data, please.
So maybe Julie can prepare some kind of report?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be immediate, obviously, but yeah.
Like today?
Well, it is immediate.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, because G is in there.
Yes.
So.
I was going to do that after we approved it.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure.
I want to get ahead of my skis here.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. I would like Sean Kearns to come forward or stand up and introduce our new football coach, Chuck Chuck Williamson, right?
Yep. Trevor McKay, board, community members, staff members. It's my privilege to introduce a new football coach, Mr. Charles Williamson. He is coming to us from Washington Courthouse most recently. Also spent some time at Central Crossing and Westland High School down in the Columbus area. Took over a program down there that was struggling, and has been to the playoffs the last three years, took one in the second round this past year. Has been a rebuilder of programs at several of his previous stops. Wife Kelly and three grown sons. At this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Williamson.
I'll be short, I'll be short here. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, the administrative team, and especially Mr. Kearns for the opportunity to be part of this Marion family. I'm really excited. I can't wait to get going. I can assure you, our football program will, our student athletes will represent us in the hallways, in the classroom, and on the football field. Also, my goal is to make Marion Harding football an elite program, both on and off the field. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and good luck.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. On on that last round of a. On that last round of approvals, just please take note of the volunteers who have worked with our students and our staff. I see some familiar names. And so when you see these folks around town, thank them for their work because it doesn't go unnoticed that we have so many great volunteers working with our students, and it's so appreciated. All right. Item thirteen, policy readings approval. This is the final reading and approval of board policies. Superintendent recommends a second reading and approval of the following policies, and those are listed there. There are several. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion has been had. We had that earlier.
Other than the one we had earlier in seven, four, four, zero, the comma, and an or.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Steyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, board announcements, we've listed there our future board meetings. The next one is February twenty-first, which is the day after President's Day, so it will be on a Tuesday. Do I have any advisory committee reports?
Thank you. So while we've been reassigned, I'd like to thank Lisa and Johnny for attempting at least, and I think we will, to reschedule some of the committee meetings due to conflicts I've had with work. So but look forward to being on the curriculum and diversity and policy committee.
And I would be remiss.
Go ahead.
Because I forgot to thank the one individual that's helped us through this hiring procedure with our new superintendent, and that is Veronica. We can't convince her to stay, but she'll be back to help us as needed. So that's our next process of finding a new treasurer. So Veronica, it's been a long time. You've served our district very well. Our finances are pretty, pretty good shape. So did you have anything you wanted to say?
Nope.
I know her staff is going to very much miss her, so.
So I thought, I thought we had a curriculum report, but maybe not.
It's my fault. Go ahead.
No, I don't have it. We said we were going to do it. I don't want to, I'll stay in my lane, but.
No, 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 no. I'm glad you reminded me.
I like this calendar, so thank Amy for committee assignments. Maybe we can attach it to future board stuff. I also, the curriculum, our next curriculum meeting has been rescheduled. I think it's the twenty-second instead of the twenty-first, so.
Yeah, as Tara had mentioned, during the last curriculum meeting, discussing the CKLA writing, I understand that that, the presentation has been pushed back, but that's in the process of getting an update on where CKLA is and how things are going. There's a dyslexia professional development that was very, very well received, fifteen teachers for four days, great feedback from that. And we even thank you for some district service center admins who covered classes as a result of that. I know there was a concern that the teachers were being taken out for that. The math committee is, let's see, still requesting samples from other companies besides math expressions. And as far as we know, if math expression is deemed to be the best program for our kids, we're going to keep it, but we're still very much in the process. Also, taking a look at the process that we undertook for CKLA versus Wonders, and hopefully not make it versus. But that is in the process of happening right now. And then obviously with the early literacy program, the numbers aren't very high, but kids are working, teachers are working. We just got to make sure that we keep plugging away. And I like what I've heard in terms of even the preschool kids and making sure that we're ready for kindergarten. And we're not trying to catch up for the first two weeks or two months. So good things happening, work to be done, and research being done too, so.
All right. All righty. At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session. I don't believe any board action will come afterwards. But this would be for item one, appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, et cetera. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Steyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried, so we will be back. We won't be back. You can all leave. Thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate everyone being supportive of our schools. And until we meet again.